Township Precipity Troy Hills, Town Council Agenda Meeting, October 9, 2012. Public invited, public participation. Meeting called to order by myself, 7:30 PM. Please rise for a flag. Mr. DePiero?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Corrifi?
Here.
Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Mr. Ferraro?
Here.
Mr. Vigilante?
Present.
Mr. Stanton?
Here. Others present, Mayor Barbario, Jasmine Lim, Business Administrator, Justin Marqueta, Township Attorney, Yancy Wazirmas, Township Clerk. Purposes of this meeting is to set up the agenda for a regular township meeting, October 16, 2012. Formal action may or may not be taken. Statement of compliance. Adequate notice of meetings have been provided in accordance with the requirements of open public meeting law. Founded notice in new office Township Clerk. Posted meeting notice on the bulletin board Municipal Building, December 15, 2011, where it's remained posted since that date. Legal notice appeared both daily records or ledger, forwarded by fax and other local newspapers, local radio stations, December 19, 2011. Note, new day and time. Council meetings are videotaped, aired on cablevision. Public access, Channel 21, 1 PM Saturdays, are also available for viewing at www.precipity.net. Okay, appointments done, presentations. Ordinances, everything set for next week?
Yes.
Okay, status of adopted ordinances. Amendment bus stops, 2012, call 33. Adopted date, 9/18/2012. Mayor's action, 9/20/2012. Effective date, 10/15/2012. Table of organization for Precipity Troy Police Department, 2012, call 34. Adopted date, 9/18/2012. Mayor's action, 9/28/2012. Effective date, 10/22/2012. Scheduled meetings, 10/16/2012, 7:30 PM. Regular meeting, public invited, public participation. 11:20/2012, 7:30 PM. Agenda meeting, public invited, public participation. Meetings for approval, agenda meeting of August 14, 2012. Agenda meeting, 9/11/2012. Regular meeting of 9/18/2012. Discussion, 2013, Knoll Golf Rate.
Thank you. Glenn Foesel, the Superintendent of the Golf Utilities, here with us today. Glenn, if you want to come up to the front. Glenn has met with the Golf Committee and then a Subcommittee of the Golf Advisory Committee, and a series of recommendations have come out of those meetings we've met. The Administration also met with Glenn. For some changes to fees at both the Knoll West and the Knoll East. I'm going to start with this big sheet. We have extras available for the public in the front. There are several recommendations. In terms of the Knoll West membership fees, there's a recommendation to prorate membership fees after July 1 by reducing the annual fee by 50 percent. The next recommendation is related to reducing the non-member fee rates for greens, for play, by $3 around. You may recall, earlier this year, we adopted an ordinance that increased fees. And for Precipity members, we increased the fees by $3. For non-residents, we increased the fees by $6. We doubled the increase. We're finding that that's become problematic there, and the non-resident member was the only fee across the board that we increased by $6. In every other category, we only increased it by $3. So, we thought it would be the fair thing to do to bring that fee increase in line with the others. So, we're recommending that the 2012 fees for non-resident members be reduced by $3 in 2013.
2013.
Yes. But, it's the schedule that you have in front of you shows the reduction by $3. The next recommendation is to provide the Golf Superintendent with the discretion to reduce rates by as much as 25 percent, as long as there's some mechanism in place, for example, the website or some other kind of social media, so that everyone is offered that reduced rate. It's not offered to one particular person. And, we can either use our website, or hopefully, both our website and another website that we're also going to be talking to you about. Another recommendation is to accept credit card payments at both the East and the West. The paperwork for billing members is pretty time-consuming and burdensome, and we're hoping that accepting the credit cards will ease that.
I got to ask a question. We have not been charging credit cards that have been used at all?
No.
This is the only golf course in the world, I think.
Wow.
Where you cannot charge around the golf with a credit card.
Wow.
We did, we put in an ATM.
It has been a big embarrassment for many, many years.
We put in an ATM machine a number of years ago, but sometimes it's broken, and sometimes they're out of cash, and so, that hasn't worked as well as.
I would recommend that if you do the credit cards, that you'd be able to use debit cards too. You know, that's the way, we're all going that way. So, if you're going to do credit cards, you'd be able to do debit card too.
My question is, with credit card, how much money are we losing? I'm not against credit card. I'm saying, take them, all day long. But, do we say to you, "You're going to pay $2 extra because you're going to charge"? Before anybody answers, I'm paying 10 to 12 cents more on a gas station when I use my credit card. Even restaurants have posted, saying, "If you pay cash, or with a check." I'm just throwing it out there. If we do, I have no idea, you know, until the budget comes up, what we do. Let's say, we do a million dollars. What is the percentage that we're paying on that? Is it 3 percent? Is it 2 percent? Is it 3 and 1/2? Is it American Express? Do we take a CERN card? A lot of restaurants don't even accept American Express.
Right.
I'm just throwing it out there. I don't, you know, what is the income, and what is the township going to lose on that? Other than that, I say, take the credit card.
I've played in golf courses all over the country.
Right.
And none of them charged me to use my credit card.
How do you get gas?
That's the cost.
Cash or credit card? But, you know what I'm saying, right?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I'm saying, on every golf course I've ever played on, the fee was the fee.
Okay.
Just so you know, it's actually illegal to charge. The gas station's doing, they got a loophole, but we would not be able to charge. So, let's just 2 percent on a $100 round. If we have to pay $2, then we're only going to take in $98. So, we're going to have to take that.
Well, what I'm asking you is, we don't know how much it is. Does anybody check that?
Well, it depends. You have to bid it out. So, it depends on what the bid comes in at.
As far as credit card you're talking about?
Yes.
So, in other words, you're going to post and say, "We don't accept Visa, MasterCard."
No, no. We have to bid out for a company that will handle the credit card transactions for us.
Yeah, right. They stick for rates, though, for each card.
Right. No, but they'll bid something, and it'll probably be the average of whatever. But, my understanding is, we can charge a convenience fee. You have to word it properly, so that you don't run afoul of. I believe it's the credit card companies that require a certain type of language be used. But, the other thing, I talked to the Morris County Park Commission, and what they did when they went with credit cards was, they increased fees, knowing that, and to come up with whatever they thought, if they thought they were going to spend $50,000 to pay the credit card company, they ended up increasing the fees to make that up.
Well, that's exactly my question, but we're reducing it by $3. So, before we do that, that's why I figure I was going to bring that up. My question is, hypothetical, we don't know. It could snow up to June next year, right? How much are we standing to lose? Has anybody done that calculation?
Sure.
The only concern I have is this. I've heard it asked. Ask him to move forward.
Glenn, turn it on and state your name, so for the record, they know who's talking on the tape.
My name is Glenn Foesel.
You might want to pull it out.
Glenn Foesel, F-O-E-S-E-L. To answer your question, Glenn, we did not, we don't have a fee, what it's going to cost the township to provide this service. Alls I can tell you is this, and Mike elaborated on it just before. I think, we are currently, I'm wrong. There's two clubs that I know of in North Jersey that do not take credit cards for payment, and that's the Meadows in Lincoln Park, and an Old Country Club. Our fees would be based on the amount of transactions that occurred over a month. We're not going to restrict the membership, and having them exclusively use just credit cards. If they want to continue to charge to their account, they can do that. But, I don't have an exact fee, and we wouldn't know what that fee was until we went out to bid. So.
Well, you don't have an exact fee, exactly, but you know, let's say, what you did for the year already, or what they did last year, and the formula, once you get the formula, you will know. All I'm saying is, look, the safest way is to take credit card. I'm not against credit card. I just want to make it where everybody's aware that, look, we're going to lose some money. So, if you did $400,000, next year, you might have $370,000. I'm just saying.
I'll give you just a quick scenario. If we use this social media website, and we start to get more and more play at the Old Country Club, what has happened in the past is, I'm a member, and I invite a few of my friends to come. I do not inform them that we do not accept credit cards. It's a cash country club. So, when you get to the club, here comes your buddies, and now, you're an out-of-town, non-member, the fees are a little bit higher, and nobody has $300 cash in their pocket. So, what happens, some people will say, "Thanks, but no thanks," and they turn around and walk away.
That was my question.
Because it's a part of doing business, in the 21st century. If we're going to be competitive with other golf courses, we have to provide a service that is going to be good, not just for the consumer, but also for the town of Precipity.
Agreed 100 percent. My question is, are we competitive? Are we charging the same thing that other courses? Let's be the best, and charge the same as everybody else.
I think, I think, as we, when we move forward, I think we're going to be right on target.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, like what you had just alluded to. If now, we're offering the ability to pay with a credit card, that may in turn increase business, increase revenue, so, which would wipe out any loss or payment we'd have to make to the credit card. I mean, you, and you know, Mr. DePiero's an avid golfer, he would know, probably, a lot of people, you know, you would get a lot more people golfing, if they had the ability to pay with the credit card, and that would make up the difference. Would that be?
100 percent correct. 100 percent correct.
There's two things that concern me. One, first of all, I understand what Vinnie said, like, just be the best, but you can't go by what everybody else does, because we have different, we have, it's a self-stating entity. On top of that, their costs may be different than our costs, so it has to equal out, and support itself. But, no matter what you do, as far as, my concern is, we're going to reduce the fees until we know what this credit card business is going to be. I'd rather not touch the fees.
Right.
Do the credit cards for a year, or six months, or one season, and then decide from there, what you're going to do as far as reducing the fees. Because, again, the more you do, and the more business we increase, it still means the more payment you're going to make to the credit card company.
If we, with all the respect, Jim, if we do not reduce these fees, we're going to lose some non-resident members from Monville and some adjacent towns.
And where are they going to go?
We got some clubs, that I took emails right after this, and a $6 increase. Guy said, "We got 60, 70 golfers, we're in a club. We're not coming for that increase."
Yeah. And the other thing, yeah. The other thing to answer Vinnie's question is, there's no way to predict how much it's going to cost us to use the credit cards, because I'm a member, and I charge, and I got a monthly bill, and I pay by, I'm going to continue to do that. So, not everyone is going to use the credit cards. Some people that have cash businesses prefer to pay cash every week when they play, so they're not going to change either. So, this is primarily for the non-members who come to the course, maybe for the first time, or come from this golf.com website that we're going to use, and every other course has it, and it's an embarrassment that we don't.
I agree. I'm not disagreeing, I'm just letting everybody know that that's going to happen, where six months from now, somebody says, "Oh gee, we didn't think of that." So, that was the first thing that came to my mind.
We did think of it.
And, oh, okay. You didn't say it.
If we reduce the fees, and we stay status quo, we don't increase business at all, that means we're going to be at somewhat of a loss of revenue.
Right. That's exactly what I said.
My question is, is there enough in the surplus that make me be able to cover that? I don't want to reduce fees.
We're only reducing the fee in one category, for non-members. That's all. It's not across-the-board reduction, it's just for this one category.
And it's the same one we increased $6 in January.
And we're going to bring it down, we're going to reduce it by $3 from the $6 increase we gave them before.
I have a question for you, Mr. DePiero. So, in other words, how do you pay your bill, or how do most golfers pay their bill? They impound to a checking account?
No. I have an account, I have an account with the township.
Okay.
And I just say, "Bill me." And once a month, they mail me a bill, and I do that for two reasons. A lot of information comes out with that bill, okay? The following month's golf outings, so I know when they are, when there are open days, any of these outings I might want to play in to support that group, whatever it is, okay? So, a lot of flyers come with the bill, not just the bill itself. That's the way I prefer to do it. Some members pay cash.
The reason I ask that question is because, being in my own business, credit cards improve cash flow. You're not chasing people for money after, you know, "I'll pay you 30 days from now." I get my money right there on the spot.
If I can just say this, I spoke with the County of Morris, and Jasmine spoke about that before, and Renee Close is the Director of Golf, and they instituted the use of credit cards 10 years ago. And they do have a convenience fee that was placed into the fee schedule, but they have increased revenue tenfold. It's just amazing. And again, Mike makes a good point, too. It's not just for the membership, and if we have the ability for 2013 to really expose the club, the club is a hidden gem. There's not a lot of people that know about the Old Country Club.
Mr. Foesel?
Yes, sir.
Make no mistake about it, I am in favor of the credit card. Make no mistake about it. I just wanted to bring it out there, so everybody's on the same level. Like, I'm not going to put Mr. DePiero on the spot, but being that he's the golf expert, and I'm not, I could ask you, or I feel free to answer, or Mr. DePiero. So, you're saying, for $6, these people have another place to go that's cheaper than the Knolls? Because I do not play golf. Mr. DePiero and Mr. Stanton said, "I got 60." I don't doubt anything. I'm just saying, so these people are going to drive somewhere. If I live in Monville, where am I going to pay $6 cheaper than I'm paying at the Knolls Country Club, to go play, and probably going to waste a gallon of gas, and you're there anyway? I'm just asking because I want to learn, not for anything. And I'm not against not reducing the fees. I just want, my question answered.
And your question is an excellent question. The only thing I can convey to you is this, there's a possibility that we could lose 200 members.
Okay.
Will it happen if we don't decrease that $3? I can't answer that question. All I can tell you is this, we've met with the Golf Committee, and all the concerns that the Golf Committee has had, over the last several years, anytime there was an increase, the non-resident members always received a larger increase, for whatever reason. And if you, I don't have the 2012 increases, but the member guest, they only had a $3 increase, the club guest had a $3 increase. These are all non-members. But, the Precipity member had a $3 increase, and the New Jersey member, the non-resident member, had a $6 increase. So, again, are they going to travel away, if we don't give them a $3 discount? I don't know. It could happen. It's like anything else, it could happen.
It was really not a $3 discount, it was a $6 increase.
Right. But, if we repeal the $3, it's across the board, everybody's having.
I'm this year.
This is a Precipity resident.
Yeah, I got that.
This is a non-Precipity resident, from New Jersey. Member guesses, if you bring something to play with you. A non-member, this is the one, this one, right here.
So, it's going to go to 49?
No, that already shows the reduction.
Okay, so they're paying 50?
It was 55, 75. It's going to be reduced to 52, 75, come 2013.
All right.
That's the only fee in the fee schedule that will be changed, at the West.
Okay, because I'm not seeing it here, so that's why I'm asking. Okay. I'm saying, there's no comparison. But, that's fine. So, what do we need to do? Make a motion?
No, we would have to introduce an ordinance next week.
Okay.
I'm in favor. Anyone else under discussion?
Okay.
Just one more explanation for you, so you know. The reason for the July 1, 50 percent of the annual fee, we've had people call up and want to join the Knoll. And if they call in July, August, September, they have to pay for the whole year, when half of the golf season is gone. And so, we turn them away. You have to pay the full rate, or you can't join, or wait till the next year. The next year, they might join someplace else. So, what we're doing here is allowing Glenn to at least say, "Okay, it's after July 1, you pay half the year's rate for this year."
Sounds good to me.
And then you get them in sooner than make them wait another six months.
Is this your recommendation, Mr. Foesel?
Yes, it is.
$3?
Yes, it is. Yes, sir.
I have no problem.
So, the ordinance would reflect the first three recommendations, the membership fee, the $3 reduction for the non-resident members, and then, providing the Golf Superintendent with the discretion of up to a 25 percent reduction.
What would that be for cancellations of tournaments or subjects?
Openings, openings, if it's a few days before, if we have some openings at the Knoll, and no one's projected to come and play.
Okay.
Okay? So, rather than have those open times and no income come in, Glenn can post, if we go on this golf.com thing, he can post on there and say, "A reduction tomorrow, or the next day, whatever it is, okay, at these times." And we can pull in some additional revenue and better utilize the course.
What are we doing with the credit card?
We don't have to, the credit card and, and, yeah, the credit card comes, that doesn't have to be part of the ordinance.
I just have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Do we give rate, group rates, I guess, or no?
No, sir. The fees.
Well, we should consider that, if that's what we're doing.
For outings.
Right.
Well, for outings, there's a set fee, and that's in place.
And how many people, is there a minimum? I guess you don't need a maximum, but you need a minimum.
Alls I can tell you is this, they try to work and accommodate groups of 20, and groups of 140. It just all depends, you know? And the fee for the caterer, the head pro, all gets equated into that final fee.
Thank you.
If we get, if we have an outing that's projecting 80 golfers, and on the day of the outing, they only have 50 golfers, all right? Well, Glenn can, if some members want to play, Glenn can send out members, even though it's a day scheduled for an outing, we have room on that course for members to go out and play. And he sends out an email to let everybody know that.
That's something we just instituted this year, mass emails.
You should send that to everybody. You should put me on your email, and I don't play golf.
All right. The last recommendation, and Glenn's going to have to stay up for this, because he knows the most about it, is to contract with Golf Channel Solutions for website development and marketing, for both the East and the West. And Mike and Glenn both have alluded to that website during tonight's meeting. Why don't you go ahead and describe how that works?
Just real basically, golfnow.com is the biggest marketing golf network that is on the entire East Coast, if not the entire country. They are a website that gives the consumer the ability to go online, book a tee time, and then what they do is, they would send either fax, or if we had an automated tee time system, which we do not have at the Old currently, they send us a, the tee time for the next day. And you're probably saying, "What does all this mean?" What we're trying to do is, from 1 o'clock in the afternoon till about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, we get no play whatsoever at the Old Country Club. We get a couple of groups that show up. So, the key word is, demand-based pricing. We have no demand for anybody that wants to play golf from 1 o'clock till 3 o'clock. If we institute golfnow.com, this would give us the ability to expose the club. We don't give any discounts initially. We give them the tee times. If you're baking cookies, they want to bake, they want the burnt cookies. They don't want the good cookies. So, we post all these tee times from 1 o'clock in the afternoon till 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and we wouldn't give 20 tee times. We would just give initially 10 tee times. We'd put teasers out there, and see how people would respond. We'd give full rack rates a week in advance. If somebody wants to play at an Old Country Club, and they're not a member, they're going to pay $70 and 75 cents. And the big thing is, demand-based pricing. People start saying, "I want to play at an Old Country Club," because they'll develop a website for us, they'll expose the club for us, at no fee. But, the catch is, they want in return, one round a day, one foursome, where golfnow.com can post on a website, and they can charge whatever they want to play our course. So, there's no fee, we have no monetary fee, we have to pay them, no monthly stipend, but we have to give them. And they don't take, they will not take the preferred tee times. It would not affect the members' play, they would not have the ability to play weekends from 7 o'clock, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, and so on. We would give them the tee time that we want to give them, and then they would post that on the site, and if somebody books that time, they charge them, they send these to force them to the course, and then they have the ability to play a round of golf.
And how do they collect their money?
They collect it with a credit card.
We don't handle it all?
No. Not at all.
Basically, it's an in-kind kind of a charge.
Nobody calls a country club, nobody calls a golf course anymore on the phone, and says, "I need a tee time tomorrow for 7 o'clock," unless you're a member at a course. Everything is booked online.
Sounds good, but I have a question.
Absolutely.
And, this website that you said, do we have a limited, like, is it, is it in writing that we're going to do this on a trial basis for six months, a year, two years?
It's a one-year contract.
Okay.
After one year, we can back out of it, no obligations, no nothing.
Sounds good business sense to me.
But, all of the Northwest, all the courses in Pennsylvania, all the courses in New York, all the courses in Connecticut, and so on, all around golfnow.com. And once we, if we establish this website, and they set it up for us, we get listed as a new golf course. And then, once it's a new golf course, you're going to get so many hits, and so many people are going to get on and explore that website. So, that's going to give us the ability to expose the club. So many people still think it's a private country club, that the public can't play it.
What do you guys think? I think it sounds good.
I think it's a marketing, I think it's a marketing tool, and if it costs you one round of golf, and that's what it is, it's pretty cheap to me.
But, we're not taking anything from the membership.
Actually, it's one round on each, we have two golf courses.
One round on each?
Just one round on each, because this golf.com is going to have it on both courses.
It's still cheap advertising.
Absolutely.
I agree.
The only question I have with the fees, they could charge what they want for that foursome?
Correct.
That could cause a little war in case.
Well, here's the thing, and that's a great, that's a great question. So, technically, if a member wants to wait, forget about a non-member, but if a member wanted to wait and book a tee time at 3:30 in the afternoon, where he might have the ability, have a reduced rate, he can do so. But, again, but anybody, yeah.
Last week, I only paid 20.
wanted to wait and book a tee time at 3:30 in the afternoon, where he might have the ability, have a reduced rate, he can do so. But again...
I don't mind a membership, I just...
But anybody, yeah.
Last week, I only paid 20.
That's correct. They can undercut us. But that's the exposure. That's the trade-off.
The exposure is great.
Because they want to recoup something for the exposure they're giving the club. It's like, you want to go to Yankee games tomorrow night. If you want to sit behind first base or third base, you're going to pay top dollar. Or you can sit in the no-sleeve section and get it for nothing. Everybody wants to play golf from 7:00 to 12:00. Everybody wants to play in the morning. Nobody. The tee sheet's on weekends at the Knoll Country Club, and Mike's a member up there, he can tell you.
Let me...
Nobody's playing after 1:00.
Let me ask you a question. When they advertise on the website, is it our website or their own website?
It's theirs.
No, no. I'm saying, for those people that play, I'm saying, I know they're doing the website for us.
Correct.
I'm saying, when they're given the, let's use the word free, but they're charging, okay? The four people that come to play, they don't book through the Knolls, they book through that company. Don't they have a different name?
I don't, no, no, no.
They need to throw down for everything, even ours.
Exactly.
It's still their website. They're not doing a website for us. It's their website.
It's their website.
So people that want to play for us are booking through them?
Correct.
Okay. I thought we were...
And then the no-shows, if you want to, if you want to pay, play the course, you have to give a credit card number. They get a $2 fee just for booking. And then what that does is, if I, Fozell's due for a tee time tomorrow morning at 10:00, I don't show up, well, now we have the credit card, and we can charge them a no-show fee.
See, the advantage of this golfnow.com, a lot of guys looking for different places to play. Now, the way you could, if you didn't have a golfnow.com kind of a website, then you have to get on the website of every single golf course in North Jersey to see what's available and what the rates are. Here, you can go on this one website, and all the courses that are participating in this are listed right there. You see all the courses right there with their rates and the availability of tee times on one website. That's the advantage of, that's why a lot of golfers go to that one website.
Who's feeding, who's feeding golfnow.com that information? Us, you?
Which information?
Like Mr. DePiero was just saying, that rather than going to 40 different websites, going to the one, but who's feeding golfnow.com that information when we're available?
Tee times, yeah, that would be my responsibility.
Okay.
And again, occasionally, we have on weekends, there'll be an available tee time that a member doesn't want, 8:00 in the morning. So instead of wasting that tee time, the day before, we can throw it online and attract somebody. But we wouldn't give them a discount or nothing. If they want to play at the Knoll Country Club, they're a non-member, they're going to come and play, pay $89.25.
It's kind of like the airlines just trying to fill up seats.
Well, I was just...
You can have somebody comes here for training, a conference, and now they go on to this site, and all of a sudden, it pops up, you know what? I'm going to finish up at 1, 2:00 in the afternoon. I go on to the site, boom, here's the Knoll Golf Club. I can go play golf at 2:00, right from, as soon as I get done with my training or my conference here.
When I met with the golf committee, the biggest apprehension they had was the membership. They didn't want to affect any play for the membership. And, you know, I've spoken with Mike about this several occasions, and the golf committee, we're not taking any, anything away from the membership. I just want everybody to understand that. The members will continue to have the ability to play when they want.
But, just to work, Mr. Vigilante said, from what I understand with the airlines, so if I go, let's say tomorrow is Wednesday, and let's say you post 8:00, if you want to play four people, it's $70. You want to play at 1:00, and it's $25, everybody sees it anyway, even if it's their money. I mean, do I understand that right, or no?
No, you're correct. You're correct.
Oh, okay. So, I have no problem with that, I mean, so don't book that time if you don't want it.
Again, if in fact, it's instituted in 2013, we don't want to send a wrong impression. We're not going to post 20 tee times a day, because then what we're telling people is, nobody wants to play at the Knoll.
Right.
So we send a couple of tee times to start, and see if we have that demand-based pricing. See if people want to play. If they're making hits, they're making reservations, well, now we can put a couple more tee times. But now, if we're putting the tee times on, and we're not reducing, we're going to full rack rate for non-members, and nobody's playing, well, then maybe we might have to reduce it a little bit.
But you could play with it up to 25, right?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
And then, the next page that you have is, the legal size paper is just the reduction at the East for non-residents. And again, that, what you see highlighted reflects a $3 reduction from the...
East on the $6 increase.
Yes.
My next question is, why do you use such big pieces of paper?
Because I didn't want to have to squint.
And we're Tree City, USA.
And we'll bring, not next week, but in November, we'll put a resolution on authorizing the agreement with Golf Channel.
The other thing we can do next year, this will be a learning curve for us with this golfnow.com, they post all kinds of statistics for us, how many plays, what play we had, what we didn't have, and why. They gave us an analysis at the end. So next year, we can fine-tune it. If they're telling us we're losing a lot of play because, and they give us reasons, or this is very popular, you know, keep it going. We get that kind of feedback after a year, so we can decide if we want to fine-tune anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, under Mayor's resolution, Mr. Creefy?
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, appointing Paula Cazarelli as the Director of Municipal Utilities. Here resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills in the County of Morris, State of New Jersey, that it does hereby advise and consent to Mayor James R. Barberio's appointment of Paula J. Cazarelli as Director of Municipal Utilities of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills for a term as provided by law and until the appointment and qualification of his successor.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Creefy, second by Mr. Vigilante. Roll call.
Before we take the roll call, I'll just make the comment that I'd like to welcome Paula back to Precipity. She was an excellent employee years ago, and I'm sure she will be an excellent employee now.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Um, Brian. Under my agenda, it's going to be hard for me to talk, I got a laryngitis, so I know everybody's smiling out there. But in regards, I wanted to talk, this is horrible, I wanted to talk in regards to the sewer fee. We met with the consultant, when was it, Jasmine, Thursday?
Last week.
Last week, and we're working on a recommendation to bring forward to the council, hopefully in November. We have different, certain scenarios, but at the same time, we don't want to affect our credit rating, so we're trying to get something that is going to be work, we might have two ways to do it. But I'll present it to the council, hopefully sometime in November.
Sounds good.
Can you wait till you could talk?
Yeah, I'll try.
What about, you're doing a new roof at the sewer treatment plant, right? You have some other work out there?
That, um, we...
How does that come into play?
It's, um, well, any additional work in terms of capital items, we can continue to bond forward, or there's, we would still keep enough money in reserves to handle some of those projects.
Okay.
Okay, administration, everything set for next week? Jasmine?
Yes.
Okay, engineering. Mr. Farrar, engineer report of October 2012.
Resolution, resolution...
No.
No?
No.
Edgefield Drive, no parking zone, Upper. A meeting will be scheduled with Montaber Fire Chief Smith to review the no-parking area on the upper section of Edgefield Drive. A recommendation will be made following the meeting. We receive information from Montaber Fire Chief Smith that there is no longer an issue with the parking on Edgefield Drive. No further action is needed, and this item can be removed.
Okay. That'll be removed from the agenda?
Yes.
Yep. Major soil movement permit.
Precipity Business Property LLC, Block 448, Lot 25. The planning board has approved a major soil movement permit for the movement of 1,350 cubic yards of soil in conjunction with the approved site plan. The planning board at this office recommends that the township council approve the permit with the condition listed in the resolution of approval.
Okay. That's it? Yeah, well, there's one more underneath that.
Yeah.
Approval. I'm in favor of approving. Any discussion? Okay. Next one.
Endorsement of NJDOT grant, Interpace Parkway. We are in the process of preparing and submitting a grant application through the FY 2013 NJDOT Municipal Aid Program. The application is for the resurfacing of Interpace Parkway, including minor drainage improvements. The application is due on October 16, 2012. A resolution endorsing the application will need to be adopted by the township council.
Any discussion? I'm in favor of the adoption.
Will that be ready? We're going to adopt that at a regular meeting, right?
Yes, it's ready.
Okay.
Can we go back to the planning board ordinances?
Yes, we can.
Ed Snikus could not be here tonight, so, but he will be available next week to discuss those ordinances. They're all related to changes to the master plan that the planning board has been working on for years.
If anybody has any questions, I could answer them.
He's planning to be here next week to, to just summarize those ordinances.
Before we open up to the public, we have, we did have our first meeting about the stack-in ordinance. We have a second meeting set up for the near future, and then after the second meeting, everything, you know, go forward with the ordinance from there. So I just wanted to give everyone a heads up on what's going on with that.
Before we go into public session, I got a question. I'm looking at this letter about the recreation insurance, you guys met with the risk managers. Totally agree with it, but the concern I have is, do a little research, because this is going to be something that'll come back and bite you. Because you're going to tell some homeowner to rent the park right now, that he's going to have to get an insurance certificate. You know, I mean, I understand that, I do, you know, I do it, I require it. But now you're talking about homeowners and somebody that might live in the apartments. And I know they say that it's covered under their insurance, it's not always. And if it's not, that means they're going to have to go pay a couple hundred more dollars just to rent one of our parks for $25, or whatever it is. Just make sure you guys research that a lot before you make any decisions.
We have, but, and you're correct, it could cost a couple hundred dollars more, depending on what their current policy limits are. But we feel that it's very important to protect the township, and that was the strong recommendation of the risk managers.
Because, correct me if I'm wrong, you can indemnify all day long, you give all the security, guess what? Everybody's getting sued associated with that. The guy that put the grass in that park's going to get sued, and he could have done it 10 years ago. It's just the, that's the way we live. But I do agree, you got to have it. But just realize, you're going to get homeowners and people coming in here down the road, you know, and like these little soccer folks that, you know, a bunch of grownups that want to rent, you know, rent one of our fields, I'll play soccer on Sunday, a bunch of grown-up fathers, you know, in town, taxpayers. And all of a sudden, they're like, well, are you going to change the certificate? I gotta pay more?
Go to a different risk manager, then.
So...
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open this up to the public. Can we give it five minutes?
I know one thing I'd like to, the more you take a knock, the more I'm supposed to...
Welcome to my world.
I'm making a question for you, too.
I know.
Patriots Road. Mayor, maybe Jasmine should answer this, because you sound terrible.
I'll do my best I can.
Uh, this is a bit confusing, and Mayor, I know you're aware of it, and you're doing the right thing. It's regarding Rose Court and seat in place. I just want to bring it up to the council, that a few years ago, that there was a development of 14 homes built. And the project is completed, but it appears, and this is what I'm here to ask, it appears that the developer walked away and left the town to finish installing the storm drains and the road. Jasmine, I have a couple of notes from back in the day when Phase 1 was completed. Originally, the developer was required to put up $372,000 bond. Are you, you know what I'm talking about, right?
I'm not aware of all of the details.
Okay.
And certainly not going back to the beginning.
Right. Well, there was, it was two phases. When the project was first approved, the developer put up a $372,000 bond. In 2007, the township engineer recommended that the bond be released, and he said that there was about $26,000, $27,000 left in escrow account, and that was money to guarantee that the project would be completed. The developer never finished it, the road hasn't been topped off, storm drains haven't been completed, and the sidewalks barely have been touched. I know the town is finishing the street and putting in the storm drains, and, I mean, we have no other choice. But one of the homes on the corner of Fairview and Rose Court, developer started the sidewalk, but he just ended halfway down their lot. And he was supposed to extend that all the way down to Arlington Place, which is probably a good 100 yards. So my question is, is the town actually going to finish that part of the project? And if not, is there going to be any recourse against the developer for it? And then my other question was, there was $26,000 remaining, and it's my understanding that the town has taken that money to use, to finish up the project. But cost overruns, are we going after the developer? And why was it only $26,000 when township engineer said that that was only 10% of the final estimated cost to finish this project? So he was estimating it was going to be about $260,000, $270,000.
I think you're maybe misreading. It's my, my understanding is that the cost to complete the sidewalks and the paving...
It's about $27,000.
Altogether, including sidewalks?
I know about the sidewalks, I know it's about $27,000.
I'm remembering about $50,000 for both.
Well, maybe for the sidewalks.
That's why I'm, I'm not here to, I'm not here to beat you up, because it wasn't even Jamie's administration.
It definitely wasn't 320,000.
Because, you know, what, the township engineer wrote that after the release of all performance guarantees, the developer must post a two-year maintenance bond in the amount of $25,969, which represent 10% of, 120% of the estimated cost of the final outside improvements. So that's where I, that's where I got that number from.
That's, that's the total cost of what it was done. Whatever you, whatever it costs, whatever, if it doesn't cost you $200,000 to put roads in, you have to put 10% bond up for the maintenance. That's how they calculate it.
Okay, so that 10%, that was 10% of the total outside...
If you're doing a million-dollar job, they're going to want, they're going to want $100,000 escrow.
Of all of the improvements.
That's how they come up with the maintenance.
Okay. Then the follow-up question is, do you have an estimated cost? Because I'm not a builder, but it's, it's like 300 feet at least of roads that has to be put in, as well as the storm drains. There's no way that that can be done for $27,000. This is no...
Well, I spoke to Justin, and basically what he said to me, they estimate about 420 tons. You want to read this? Because I can't, this is what we have about, this is what he's saying.
Yeah, that's, that's the cost. The cost of the paving is 27,000, and, and I'm remembering that the cost of completing the sidewalk project would be about the same.
I mean, is the town going to finish the sidewalk, or is it...
There's still going to be enough money for the sidewalks, so I will be contacting the developer to sit and meet with them. And then, from that, it's like I really can't discuss if it's going to be future litigation or not, but I'm definitely going to sit and talk with them to see. And then we have to decide what we're going to do moving forward. Boy, this is rough.
You got 30 seconds left. I stopped the clock while she was going, so I just wanted to know.
This is just my, my last follow-up question.
Okay.
You know, I guess there's debate about whether sidewalks should be there or shouldn't be there. I guess it was a requirement of the planning board at the time. I mean, I guess there was a strong argument why sidewalks wouldn't even be needed in that neighborhood, which I can understand. But is there a process in place where maybe for new construction going forward, where sidewalks generally are required, where we can maybe perhaps have the developer put a sidewalk escrow fund and leave it up to the town to decide where to put sidewalks in?
I believe we've done that before in the past.
That would have been a perfect idea for that.
How that works, is you go before the planning board. Everybody wants sidewalks, and at least one side of the road. Everybody wants sidewalks on at least one side of the road. Just so you know, up and down Vale Road, they're all over, kids still walk on the street, but that's besides the point. The developer is going to pay for that, and the town's gonna make that part of his agreement before, to get his approval from the Planning or the Zoning Board. And what that does alleviates the town of having to put those sidewalks in. Because as you can see in Lower Lake Hiwatha and in different areas of town, we're doing resurfacing, curbing project, and we're putting sidewalks in, but we're paying for that now. And as, it started, what, maybe like 10 years ago, 15 years ago, we started making developers put all these-
Better the developer pay for it than the taxpayers.
Of course. Vinny, this is my last follow-up. Because, I mean, I don't know if we really needed sidewalks there, but that was part of the developer's agreement.
If we don't put the sidewalks in now, we probably will be, if we don't make the developer do it now, we'll be doing it later, because think about the snow, okay? When you, when you get the plows, plow the road, okay? Kids have to go to school, they have to walk down to the bus stop, they're walking in the snow in the street, okay, because there's no sidewalks. That's a safety factor for the kids getting to wherever the bus stop is. So we want sidewalks, at least on one side of every street, ultimate goal, so that the kids can walk safely to their bus stops.
Yeah. Councilman, take a look. I mean, I feel bad for those people. These are nice homes.
You know what it is? You have that park there.
That's what I'm talking about.
So that may have been why they wanted the sidewalks.
Good point. Well, can I ask a question to the council or to the attorney or to the administration? Do we, no, no. For future, do we have the right to say, pass like a resolution or something? Anybody, I don't even know who the builder is, but anybody does this, you don't do business in precipity? Should we consider that?
There are several, several contractual and legal issues that you raise in that question. We could certainly look at something to that effect. However, a geographical exclusion, which would be akin to something of a non-compete or, you know, a business exclusion, it evokes a lot of different legal areas that we'd have to research.
It wouldn't necessarily be an exclusion. It could, it could be, you can't, you will not be receiving any more permits until you pay what you already owe us.
Again, we'll, we'll have to look at, at the issues surrounding right to permit, entitlement to permit, qualification for permit.
And since this is potential litigation, we probably shouldn't be talking about it, right, counselor?
All right. Well, people have to know that precipity means business, and don't come here if you don't wanna do what you gotta do.
Good evening. Stephen Frankel, One Winding Way. I'm here to talk about two different issues. Today, at about 5:55 to about 6:15, I and my family and along with a lot of soccer kids observed a big brown bear chomping on garbage at Intervale Elementary School. I know you guys know this. Not one of those alarmists who want you to authorize the police to shoot it on sight. But this is the third time soccer practice has been canceled. My kids attend skip. I know it has posed no immediate and imminent danger to anybody yet. What can we do as a community to relocate this bear? Now, cost is an issue. I need the council to do something, because it has clearly made its home or its territory right outside Intervale School. It is observed constantly, walking on the sidewalk between, I don't know the name of the street, and the parking lot. And if you guys haven't heard this directly, you hear it from me, you'll hear it from-
As a matter of fact, it came down to Fernwood Place, too, because my wife got nervous when some cops are running down my driveway with rifles in their hands.
Yeah. Now, the police were somewhat nonchalant.
I'm assuming those were stun-
Yeah.
-tranquilizer guns and not-
It was that Rockaway Meadow also, I guess, the same.
I don't know if it's the same one. I don't know if we've got a couple. Whatever, you know, but anyway. I'm on the Traffic Safety Committee. We don't want to wait for an accident before we take action to make things safer in our township. And again, I'm not asking you to authorize this to be shot on sight, but we need to take action and figure out what we can do with this situation. But I don't want to use all my time on this, because I know an answer's not coming today. But I do want to talk about another issue, and that is the 26-acre Waterview Track, which I know, thanks, Jimmy.
Just saying.
I and the council go way back, and I see new faces here that I don't recognize, I see faces that I do. As you guys all probably know, a concept has been filed with the Planning Board. They're coming to the Planning Board on November 5th. A concept, I'm not, you know, that, I don't know exactly what these things are, but I do know that they're gonna get the Planning Board's feel for what it is to bring 72 town homes and possibly a Whole Foods and a Target to this 26-acre track. Now, it's currently zoned for an office building, as you guys probably know. You all will have to make a zoning change if, if this is approved. I'm also not here to say this is not good for our town, but, you know, we need, we need to partner with the council, with the, with the township, with the Planning Board, because unlike other places that are being developed, this backs up to many, many homes. And when you start talking about 72 residences and major supermarkets and major retail chains, you're talking light pollution and garbage, right on the backs of people's homes. And, you know, this is, this is one of the things that got me active in the community. Many years ago, the developer proposed that Township Center, which was not good for our community. There was a lot of feedback, and eventually the developer walked away.
There was also age-restricted housing, and the Intervale residents also didn't want that.
I-
Well, guess what? Something's gonna go there sooner or later, guys.
Right.
I think this, age-restricted housing would've been the lesser of two evils.
Mike, I don't disagree with you, and in fact-
They didn't want that either.
I would, you're right, the majority of the people did not want it. I do not count myself in that majority, because I do, I too, think that age-restricted housing would've been good for our community, no impact to the school system.
With no direct access to any of the streets in the back-
Mike, I don't disagree with you.
-or Waterview Plaza would've been the only access.
I don't disagree with you. But this, and again, I'm not saying you guys should shoot everything down, because, you know, sure, we would love a nice wooded 26-acre lot, never to be developed. I recognize at times, I'm looking for partnership with the Town Council, with the Planning Board, to figure out what's right for our community, and to find out whether or not this is right for our community. I don't know, I haven't seen the plan. I'm just coming here to talk to you guys tonight, to let you know that, you know, we do need, you know, two things, get, you know, figure out what to do with this bear-
Well, I don't, I don't think, I don't think you can collectively get the residents in that area to agree on anything that's right for that track to land.
You're probably right, but I can also tell you, we can agree that, we can agree that there's gonna be some things that aren't right for that track of land, Mike.
That, that discussion might, might be worth pursuing.
You have to understand, the developer's gonna come in here, okay? And he's gonna wanna build something there, and he's gonna take the path of least resistance.
And he's, and he's gonna give you the hugest thing, and then they're gonna cut it down to something pal-
Let me finish. He's gonna take the path of least resistance. So I, I like what you're saying, and you're gonna, you were, it was a pleasure working with you and some of the other folks I worked with years ago.
Appreciate it.
But like Mike said, something's gonna go there. So what I think you need to do, and I agree with the partnership agreement, you need to collectively get on to your neighbors and say to them, because Mike is right, you couldn't get, not all you can get on the same page. You were the voice that spoke for everybody, but I know some people, as you were talking, and we were kinda agreeing with you, people in the back weren't agreeing with what you were saying. So I think you need to kinda get a consensus of what you think is right and not right there, then form a partnership with us. Because I'm gonna tell you right now, again, developers wanna take the path of least resistance. If you say, here's what we'd like to have if you're gonna do this, they're gonna wanna do that if it means them getting, you know, because, let me tell you something, the more soft costs they spend, and the more spending they spend on guys like him and engineers and all that, it costs money. But if you guys want berms and fences and buffers and all that, and that's what it's gonna take to get your approval and not fight us at City Hall, they're gonna do that. So excellent idea, but first start with getting the agreement amongst you folks, and then forming a little subcommittee with the council.
Everyone's gonna say an office building, Jimmy. They want an office building.
Well, you know-
That's what it's currently zoned for.
And maybe, but you know what? Maybe not this developer, there might be other developers out there, or maybe the age-restricted housing doesn't sound so bad now.
Versus the supermarket and the Target.
I beg your pardon?
Versus the supermarket and the Target.
Right.
Versus the age-restricted housing.
You know, if you guys, if you guys know if anybody wants to put in age-restricted housing there, I'll sell it to them, I guarantee it.
Well, you know, there were, in all, in all, when that was the proposal, half of the residents did say okay to the age-restricted housing, but the other half came to the Planning Board meeting, all opposed to it. So that died, too. So that's why I'm saying, you gotta get, you gotta get the whole community to agree to something, and I don't think that, that's even possible.
Like I said, I'm sure, Mike, it's impossible to get the whole, uh, whole area to agree on something other than one thing that we know is not right, and I don't know what that one thing is. And, and you know what? There are, there are conditions where I personally, like if there is absolutely no access to like Route 46 or something like that, which is an impossibility, I get it, and just on Waterview, I live on Forest Drive, every single person's gonna be cutting around outside 46, going west, cutting, making a right on Intervale, going-
I gotta cut you off your time, so.
Okay. Anyway.
You're on the right track.
We have a, one last thing, I'm sorry. We have a community meeting on Saturday. I'll tell them about our meeting, and we'll talk further. Appreciate your time.
No problem. Thank you, Frank.
Animal Control about relocating? If it's New York's-
I just said we would, we will.
Stay, stay game, wildlife.
Yeah, don't they normally, when they track flies, they relocate them? They don't just leave them, so.
No.
But they just probably haven't been able to get this one.
No, they put them behind Jimmy Vigilante's backyard.
I'll take them.
Jimmy brought them like-
The statue.
I can't even talk like that.
Good evening, everyone. Roy Mesmer, Tendrum and Drive. Regarding that bear, though, is that gentleman saying the bear's getting to the food dumpster at the school? Well, that, schools should be spoken about that, they should be locked, because I know what happens at Littleton, too. Again, it's our school board that's incompetent. I don't want to see a bear shot.
Man, he can have ice cream now, too.
Yeah.
Are you gonna run for the school board, Roy?
No, never. I got two votes, and yours and mine, then. I have one topic tonight. I heard that. I am disappointed that I wasn't responding to my two memos back in August. I'm dealt with the, the being on the committee, I'm not saying you wanted me on the committee, but my recommendations and the other two memos. I mean, I think you owe any resident the respect of just getting up here, we got your memo, now drop dead, Roy, go to hell. If you said that to me, I have no problem, but not saying anything to me, that bothers me a lot. Tonight, I want answers to the following regarding the Chief DeZenzos' contract. Usually when I come in front of this council, I have an opaque, big white sheets of paper so the public can see. Now we're on TV, the international people can see, but I'm not that prepared tonight to do that. But I'll lay it out for you. First, I compare the table of contents, DeZenzos' contract to the prior chief Peckerman's contract. Table of contents was not the same, and I'd expect it to be identical, but I thought it'd be rather close. It's not, ladies and gentlemen. And the taxpayers of precipity are paying a heavy dollar amount here. And I hope this council takes what I say tonight very seriously and looks into this, that this never happens again. Peckerman, his last year, actually, not his last year, year before, because it's hard to calculate when he left in August of 2011. 2010, his pay was $147,500. No additional pay. The mayor at that time, Luther, did a good job reviewing that contract and sitting down with Peckerman. DeZenzos, it's $145,192, but with a pay chart matrix that I cannot understand, and I think the public deserves an explanation. This matrix here, it has college tech, longevity, I don't know what all this means. And on the bottom, with an asterisk, with a star, technical credits. So I don't, any idea what this pay comes to. With the pay chart matrix, with the exception of longevity, I don't understand. So please explain, I cannot calculate it. Work week, now this really bothers me, and there's nothing gray or nebulous about this. Peckerman was required to work a 40-hour work week consisting of a five-day work week. DeZenzos' contract, 36.4 hours work week, no language as to workdays, and he receives comp time. For what? I don't know. Back to the pay matrix, Article 6, Peckerman, no educational benefits. DeZenzos, yes. Expenses, Peckerman had none. DeZenzos has a $2,400 expense account. What is that to pay? What do cops say? They pay you off snitches? Is that for snitches? Trying to make a joke there, because this really ticks me off. $1,000 for a uniform. If you all noticed, he didn't even have his uniform on, September 11th ceremony outside here. That bothers me. I want to say this, the sick time and vacation for both contracts is ridiculous. Nobody could work for me and have 15 sick days. They would be fired. I don't need somebody that has three days, three weeks a year off for sickness. Vacation time, not even gonna touch on that. Peckerman had no longevity pay. DeZenzos, 10% of his base. DeZenzos, put in his contract, gets birth leave. I don't think Marge is gonna wanna hear that. Childbirth leave? Again, a little joke, right? So answer me, what does Chief, Chief DeZenzos' total pay? And why is his contract so generous? How much time do I have left? 30 seconds? I'm done.
I thought that Chief Peckerman went to law school on the town.
That's nothing to do with his contract.
No, no, I'm just saying. You said something about-
Educational credits.
Education.
No, no, you don't know what I'm talking about, Vinny.
That's why I'm asking you.
My time's up.
For having a degree, you get additional money.
Is that what it is?
That's what you-
Oh, you get-
Well, I don't know.
No, 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 no.
I'm trying to find out what he's saying here.
I'm trying to figure it out myself, Vinny.
Oh, okay. But you said I didn't know what I was talking about, so.
Peckerman does not have this page. This nature.
I didn't say that. I said, I think he went to law school on the taxpayer, and you'd be surprised how many police officers in this town go to undergraduate, masters, and doctoral.
You looked throughout the county. It's a benefit in your contract that they pay for college.
I don't wanna just pick on one person, I wanna-
I'm not picking on any, I'm just comparing-
I didn't say you are.
Say this real quick.
I didn't say you are.
Work on the answers, but let me say this, and I could be wrong, Chief Peckerman and DeZenzos, very comparable. There's a lot of stuff that isn't there that was built into the salary of the former chief. And, you know, I can't discuss it, I have the facts in front of me, but the fact is that Chief DeZenzos follows the SOA contract as well. And I will get that information, but tonight, I'm definitely gonna try to speak on it.
One, the one thing I just want to clear up, and maybe for Councilman Ferrera's benefit, cops don't get paid to go to school, there's tuition, and there's no tuition reimbursement. Once they get their credits, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're wrong.
They get paid.
And then they get their credit, too.
You're wrong.
Yes, some contracts are both.
A lot grandfathered them out. The older contracts give you money per credit, but they do reimburse you full for tuition.